...the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mayor Coltrane sends his apologies. He's currently out of town for a work-related event, so we will proceed without him and we'll start with the roll call.
Councilmembers Lennon...
President.
Pollocka...
Here.
Piana...
Here.
Mayor Protem Martin.
Here. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Pollocka. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. The agenda is adopted. So next we move into our presentations and we have four presentations today, starting with the September Beautification Awards and the 2014 Certificates.
This is a little complicated for me. We're going to announce down here the winners for September and then go through June, July, and August and do a block award. And as I call the person's name, I'm pretty sure I know how many people have come to be given their awards, so we'll go through the pictures and they will come up on stage and receive their certificate from Mayor Protem.
Sure.
And also Window Decal.
Oh, very nice.
So first, 401 West Oak Ridge is owned by Diane Cassidy. She's lived there since January 2013. She was nominated by her neighbors and has single-handedly created a real wonder. She's got 80 or so boxwoods planted around the front paths of her house. And the paths that lead up to her front door and around the sides of the house are made out of broken-up concrete that looks very much like flagstone, only it has even more character to it, and it's all embedded in piggie gravel. And she's done this herself. Along the boxwoods and sometimes hidden by them are stone paths made from this broken concrete, and little secret gardens are all over the place, around every corner. She's promised to let us come back and see her backyard, too. Congratulations.
Why don't we just have everyone kind of line up and then we can turn the lights on after you've presented the pictures and do a nice ceremony all at once?
Okay, good. The next one is 401 East Oak Ridge. Nancy and Rick Jackson were nominated by a neighbor who has been influenced by Nancy's gardening practices. And so when you travel to 415, 401, and 385 Oak Ridge, you're going to see similar planting techniques. There's no grass in front, only native plants, and thick varieties of low-growing sedum on three easements and between the perennials in the front and side gardens. Nancy has three goals in mind. I talked to her today. She regrets that she can't be here tonight, but when I did talk to her, she said she has three goals, and that is to conserve water. She has water barrels on all of the downspouts, and to give her garden an unusual appearance and make a garden that will almost take care of itself. And there are three houses in a row that are really worth looking at to see that. Okay, the next one is 385 Fielding, owned by Dave Malik. He is a two-family dwelling and he maintains the grounds. He was nominated by a neighbor who says he's out there all the time working. Dave has incorporated arborvitae, ornamental grasses and hews, then added hanging ferns, cascading greenery, and window boxes for a balanced, symmetrical plan. And 1794 Wordsworth, owned by Michael Townley. He's lived there for only a year and has made a curved front lawn with a garden made of blue spruce that's cut really high off the ground and underplanted with bright fall flowers and perennials. The grass is neatly manicured. And as far as the commercial award is 941 West Nine Mile, Jerry Queen, Sue Meyer, whose husband is not here but she's here, and Nicole Tru...
Truwarji.
Truwarji. Sorry. Are here to accept this. I believe I see a lot of grasses up there, and I love all the Adirondack chairs, too. It's really a lovely place because of mead. Okay, so we're on to the June awards now. I'm just going to go through these. 274 East Drayton, owned by Rod Harris. 306 West Camborne, owned by Anne Marie Hawansky. 277 West Hazelhurst, owned by Andrew Fregon. He was here to accept the nomination and his award later. Oh, hi, there you are. 1787 East Hazelhurst, Julie Attilbelat. I wish she could be here. She has a beautiful backyard. It's gorgeous. And M. Brew, owned by Dean Bach, for a commercial award.
Pardon?
Okay, July awards. 507 East Maplehurst, John and De'ani Aratari. 454 West Oak Ridge, Julie and Ray Robinson. 424 University, Diane and Dennis Emi. This is Deidra. Deidra Padilla. I believe she was going to be here tonight. Deidra, I'm sorry. Let's go back. 424, okay, here we go. 720 Leroy, Deidra Padilla. She's lived there for 16 years and she's got a really playful backyard.
I don't know what I'm doing. I'm fired. Steve Baldwin. Okay.
We're on the August awards now.
I think I'm...I don't know what I'm doing.
Go forward.
This is a little embarrassing. I'm sorry.
You're fine.
That purple fence you saw there is Deidra's.
August, right?
Yes. 966 West Oak Ridge, Don and Lori McPhee. 1916 Highland, Jeff Primo, who's here. 1531 Pinecrest, Jeannie Davis. 926 Alberta, Anna and Ivan Midlam. And local, Bar and Kitchen, Kitchen and Bar, 344 West Nine Mile. And the Coneflower Award goes to 905 Albany, Dr. Darren Kalkin. Real unusual combination of coneflowers. And I believe that's it. We are having a block award this Saturday at the middle of Liverny and Plannavon on West Oak Ridge at 11 o'clock.
So we're hoping that all the neighbors come out. We'll have donuts and cider and maybe some coffee. So, and there'll be plaques put up by DPW to designate the block. So, we do this every year.
Great, thank you very much.
But we don't do this every year. Diane Cassidy, 445 West Oak Ridge. Jerry Queen, 941 West Nine Mile.
They're going to get a group photo, right Joey? Can you tell them to move down a bit?
Andrew Fregon?
Forgot.
Forgot.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Jeff Primo, 1916 Highland. Jeannie Davis, 1531 Pinecrest.
And I want to thank the Beautification Commission for all the hard work that they do and recognizing the beautiful gardens and yards in our city. So we're really appreciative of that organization and what they do for us. Next, we have a certificate of appreciation to be presented from the Police Department. Chief?
Thank you. Could I have Mr. Peter Benner? The audience stuff up here.
Microphone.
As most everybody knows, we had a pretty catastrophic flood at City Hall a couple of months ago. Not only did we lose a lot of our electronics and whatnot, our range and our armory was flooded. In these areas, we keep a lot of our safety equipment. After we were assessing all the items that we had lost, we called Materi Protection, a local company, who we've dealt with for many years. Mr. Benner here has been one of the individuals that we've dealt with for many years, probably the last 15 years. On the 24th, Lieutenant Palazzolo, the SWAT commander, also in charge of our armory, contacted Mr. Benner and asked if he could rush in orders for ear and eye protection for some upcoming range days. It was explained, Mr. Benner, that the majority of the department's ear and eye safety gear were destroyed in the recent flood. Lieutenant Palazzolo asked that he invoice the department's equipment. Been a couple of days, Mr. Benner dropped off 40 pairs of shooting glasses, 200 pairs of disposable earplugs, and 10 pairs of shooting marks. He would refuse to take any payment for that, and we refused to let us invoice him. He was just happy that he could help. And trust me, I love free. He would take any money, but we appreciate someone from the community that has dealt with us for so many years and they helped us in our time of need, and we really appreciate it, and we want to do something special just for the knowledge we really care. So we put together a thank you forum, and we appreciate him and his company.
Our next presentation, we have Item C, is the Small Business Administration of America, FEMA.
My name's Jack Camp. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business Administration out of Atlanta, and I'm here in town for the next several weeks because of the disaster declaration that the President made for you a couple of weeks ago. We're here in town working with FEMA, hand in hand, and there is a lot of assistance that is available to your citizens, your homeowners, your renters, and your businesses. I want to emphasize that to receive this assistance, people need to start off by registering with FEMA, and that's very easy to do. Either visit them online at disasterassistance.gov or call them at their 800 number, 800-621-3362, or visit them. They've got a center here in town at the Jerry Kulik Center. And go in there, it's very easy to register with FEMA, and they'll get you started on the program. Now, the Small Business Administration works closely hand in hand with FEMA in a lot of their programs, and a lot of people are surprised when they learn that we help homeowners and renters as well as businesses that have been affected by a disaster. And in fact, it's critical that people understand that some of FEMA's grant programs may be dependent on an SBA loan application. What happens is when people call FEMA, it's about a 15-minute telephone call to get registered, and based on that information, you'll be eligible for a whole smorgasbord of grant programs that they have. But if your income is above a certain level, some of these grant programs will not be immediately available to you. You'll need to apply to the Small Business Administration, and we're either going to offer you a low-interest long-term loan, or we're going to refer you back to FEMA for possible further grant consideration. Now, a lot of people, they say, "Well, why should I bother? I know my income's too low," or "My credit's not good enough. I'm not going to bother with the loan." Those people definitely need to apply to us because if we cannot approve someone because their income's too low or their credit history doesn't warrant a loan, we are going to refer them back to FEMA where they can get more grant money. Now, the SBA loan program is really great. FEMA is going to try to make you safe, sanitary, and secure. That's their, kind of their goal. But SBA is going to try to make you whole. We can loan homeowners and renters up to $40,000 for personal property, up to $200,000 for homeowners for damages to their real property. A lot of items, I know a lot of people had basement flooding, a lot of items in your basement are not going to be covered by insurance and perhaps not even by FEMA grants, but you'll find that they will be covered through the SBA loan program. The loans are very affordable for homeowners. Their interest rates are as low as 2.063 percent, and they can go up to 30 years. Plus, another good feature of them is that we're pretty flexible. We can go up to $25,000 on an unsecured basis for a physical disaster loan. So, you know, if you've got damage in your basement, maybe you don't want to put a mortgage on your house, but $25,000, perhaps if you have a little bit more money from FEMA or a little bit of insurance money, will be enough to get you back pretty close to where you were. So, you know, there's a lot of options you can do there. For businesses, FEMA doesn't have grants, so they will refer you straight to the SBA. But our loans can go up to $2 million for a business, and that's going to cover your machinery equipment, office furniture, pretty much any physical assets that you've had, damage to your building, leasehold improvements. We also have a working capital program. We'll call it our Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, and you don't have to even have had a physical loss to qualify for that. So, just so long as your business is having difficulty making its ordinary and necessary payments as a result of the flood, but would have been able to make them otherwise, you can qualify for that program. Now, for the businesses, interest rates are as low as 4 percent, but once again, they can go up to 30 years. We talked about collateral. They're unsecured up to $25,000 for a physical disaster loan. The working capital loans, the economic injury disaster loans, can go up to $25,000 on an unsecured basis also. So depending on its eligibility, a business could qualify for anywhere from $25,000 to $50,000 on an unsecured basis. This assistance from the federal government is only available for a limited amount of time. The deadline to apply is November the 24th. We want to make sure that you go ahead and do that. Once again, to get the ball rolling, you want to register with FEMA at 1-800-621-3362, or register online at disasterassistance.gov, or just go to the Jerry Kulik Center over here. I have some pamphlets that I've left over here, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to ask them, to try to answer them for you.
Thank you. Any questions from council or the audience?
Can you pick up a paper in the bag with all the phone numbers in it?
It has the SBA phone numbers on it. Okay, it's an SBA form, sorry. But FEMA, let me give you that number again because that is really important. Or go online to disasterassistance, that's all one word, www.disasterassistance.gov. Okay, the FEMA number one more time.
And I'm sure we can put the phone number on our website, Rachel?
Exactly.
Is it already? Okay, so you can go to the city's website to find the phone number.
I have one more question. Do they have any loans that are...
Well, FEMA has grants, and that's where the grants will come from. Okay? When you register with FEMA, there are several different programs that they have, and based on the information that you give them when you register, they'll see which programs you qualify for. Now, if your income is above basically the poverty level, you'll be referred to SBA, and some FEMA's grant programs will be reserved to determine what happens based on the loan program. But like I said, the loans are very affordable, just a little over 2 percent for up to 30 years. You can get up to $25,000 on an unsecured basis. Of course, we can go up to $40,000 for your personal property, up to $200,000 for your real estate. So we can, for most people, we can make you whole. FEMA will not typically make you whole, but that's what our goal is, that's what we're going to try to do.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Benner.
Just a couple points of clarification as well. They are again at the Kulik Center, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 p.m. We're actually the disaster recovery site for all of Oakland County, so we're very fortunate that it's here in Ferndale. So if you go to the Kulik Center, they will walk you through all of your options, all of the grant opportunities, as well as loans. And again, that's Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and for the month of October.
Thank you very much. Presentation D, the Woodward Avenue Action Association.
This is Debbie Shutt. She is the executive director for the Woodward Action Association. Couple of months ago, we had had a discussion about wanting to hear all of the things that Woodward Action Association is doing as we are part of this organization, and Debbie has agreed to come and give this great presentation, so we look forward to hearing what she has to say.
I hope it's great.
Yeah, you do a great job.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I want to be very cognizant of your time, so give me an idea, how much time is your expectation here?
It's up right now, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. It was a pleasure being here with you.
We didn't pre-... Any time, but what's April?
Five, 10.
Five or 10 minutes.
Okay, that gives me an idea that I'm going to be running through this like really quick. And do you see this in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, so I knew, it's like, are they really ignoring me and just looking down at their laps? I want to let you know that, you know, we've been around for 18 years, the Woodward Avenue Action Association. We are a membership organization of the municipalities that face Woodward Avenue, along with the business community. We are a 501(c)(3), which means we are a charitable organization. Our focus, however, is economic development and community development. We're really focused on the 27 miles and really making the 27 miles our all-American road sustainable. We have relooked at our programs. We've done a heck of a lot of planning, and now we are actually kind of morphing into an organization that's starting to implement. So we're actually seeing ourselves as placemakers for Woodward Avenue. Why Woodward? Well, first of all, we're an all-American road, and really, we are Michigan's main street, not just southeast Michigan. Everybody knows Woodward Avenue. One in 10 Michigan citizens lives in one of the 11 municipalities along Woodward Avenue, so we have a good portion of Michigan's population that really relates directly to Woodward. And of course, we have millions of tourists that visit for the Dream Cruise and the other cultural gems along Woodward Avenue, hundreds of events, and the number of eight national historic landmarks, 32 historic districts along Woodward Avenue, and hundreds of significant buildings. And I just love to say, eight national historic landmarks. I don't, you know, you have a registry of state historic buildings, you have a registry of national historic buildings. National historic landmarks are up there. You really have to be special to even get one, and we have eight. So let me just see if I can get your interest here in the Guardian Building, which is along the corridor, the Fox Theater, the Diego Rivera Murals Industry in the DIA. This is the Ford Paquette Plant, which is Ford Motor Company's first-owned factory, the Fisher Building, the historic GM headquarters. You've probably never been in this building before. This is the home of industrial mass production, Ford Highland Park, and of course Cranbrook. Every single one of these has something in common, and that is the fact that it all has to do with the automobile industry. The Guardian Building would never have been built without the finance and the monies that came out of the automobile industry. So looking at, I love this quote, we would normally put in the little film clip from the TED Talk at this point, but it's kind of challenging sometimes to get the audio to work right. But one of the transportation commissioners from New York said, "The street is one of the most valuable resources that a city has, but it's an asset largely hidden in plain sights." And that's that we've taken our street for granted for too long. We've allowed it not to build toward the economy, not to serve the people, and certainly that's what we're looking to do, is to redesign Woodward so that it better fits our communities and serves our residents. Little history, we raised $7 million since we've been in existence. We have gotten the designations for Woodward Avenue, the Heritage Route, which the state legislature just last week passed the renaming of the Michigan Heritage Route. We are now a pure Michigan byway, which will help in marketing. And of course, the scenic byway designation, all-American road. We provided the collaboration in the beginning when Nelson House from Ferndale was looking to start the Dream Cruise. He actually went to the committee, the study committee George Peake did, to sell that, and that's how we got the Dream Cruise started throughout. We secured $2 million, assisted securing it, for the Bus Rapid Transit Study that has recently picked a locally preferred alternative. And just recently, we have provided $200,000 of grant money toward the M1 Rail Project. Unfortunately, that project kind of was a little out of sync with our Complete Streets project, and much of the redevelopment of the road went forward without crosswalks. And so we wanted to make sure that that was incorporated and took some of our planning money, and we're actually able to turn it into money that will be implementation. And then we purchased the Ford Highland Park Administration Building and Executive Garage. This is a national historic landmark. We are right now starting to work with Eastern, with the Fellow, to make an application for our site to be a world heritage site. And of course, we're finalizing our Complete Streets. So how are we doing this? We're looking to transform Woodward Avenue with our Complete Streets Study into something that's not just auto-oriented but really serves all people in all ages. But at the same time, we need to be very careful that we have 11 different municipalities. Each municipality has a unique personality, and we want to make sure that the personality and heritage of each municipality is reflected along Woodward. Why a sense of place? Well... Well, it's real simple. It brings value to the community, and it really is the way to go for economic development and sustainability. If you can believe, if you can increase your walk score by one point, and that's a rating system, one point will see a realization of $3,000 of an increase in your home values. And you can see the same for commercial properties go up, jobs go up, businesses do better. So that's why we're focusing on how do we redesign Woodward to reap all the benefits. This should look familiar to you, since it's in Ferndale, and I have to tell you, when I talk to other groups, I go, you know, most of, everybody thinks, oh, Ferndale's got it all together, couldn't possibly get better. But it actually can get better, and that's the same view when we've incorporated more access for pedestrians, when we've accommodated bicycles, and also incorporated Bus Rapid Transit. So you can see, it's a much more inviting place, it's a place people want to be, and it really is placemaking, giving you a sense of place. We're, another one, oh, and just so everybody knows where we're at with that, and I'll tell you now, and not during the scheduling. We went, our Complete Streets master plan is in draft format. We were waiting for the Bus Rapid Transit locally preferred alternative to be selected, because depending where it's at in the road, then it depends on how we design the road. Now that it's been selected, I think it's November 20th, we are reconvening to start our work forward in going toward a finalization of that plan. However, in addition to that, one of the things that came out was the fact that there's this big blob around 696 and Woodward that's kind of this lost area, because both in our Complete Streets Study to date, and also in the Bus Rapid Transit, both studies have ignored that intersection. And in all honesty, it's just complicated as all get out. So we were fortunate enough to get some additional money from Kellogg, and also some other funding. Working with the municipalities, we are going to start a charrette that really looks and solves the problems there, along with the zoo. That also kicks off next month. Another area of our interest is landmarks, wayfinding, and signage, and I bet you I'm over my time, aren't I? But of course, we have the tributes, we have one plan for each mile. Our next one to be implemented will be the Martin Luther King one down in Detroit. Oh, shoot, and I probably just did, oop, wrong button. This is the building that we purchased, we're working to make this an automobile heritage welcome center, and I want to give you two seconds with the big vision. This is Ford Paquette, and if you've not been to Ford Paquette, I highly encourage you to go to Ford Paquette. This is Ford Motor Company's first factory. It's open to the public until November, which they closed, they don't have a heating system that works yet. However, Henry Ford's office has been recreated, we've assisted with funding with that, along with the secret room. One of the things that Ford Paquette has planned for the future is Model T camp, which would, just like model, just like baseball camp, fantasy baseball camp, you would sign up to come in and make a Model T like they did when they made it in stationary assembly, and you'd be there for a week. Now, if you paid enough, you'd drive that Model T home. So that's in the future, and that's what's being planned for Paquette. The thing that's really nice is that when people come to visit Paquette, they'll actually see a team of people building an automobile the same way they used to build an automobile when it was stationary assembly. This is Ford Highland Park. This factory still exists, it looks just like this, and this is the birthplace of industrial mass production. There's old Henry, there's no way that we can afford to reinstate the moving assembly line. However, Henry Ford took film footage of every inch of this factory when he was operational there, and it's all in the National Archives. So once we get access into this plant, it is our big vision, that we hologram Henry, and we actually three-dimensionalize the films, so that people can go from Paquette and see stationary assembly, come here to Highland Park and see what it was like when there was the assembly line, and then they'll move on to the rouge and see how we make cars today. That will attract international tourists who come to the Motor City, the motor capital of the world, to actually have a heritage experience. So placemaking has been done all over, very successful, and reaps benefits to the municipalities and the residents. That's what we're following, given models. We're taking our automotive heritage and our brand identity, marrying it with Complete Streets, and putting together a livable community for 27 miles. I'm not going to go through the timeline here, we timed it all out, I'll answer any questions that you have. I would encourage you, if you don't get our newsletter, please sign up for our newsletter so that you hear what's happening every single week. And this is a great and exciting time for Woodward Avenue, and we're so glad that you're a member.
Thank you very much for coming today. Any questions from council?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I've been astonished supporter of the WA3 and heavily involved in the Complete Streets Plan. What activities do you foresee happening to actually finalize the plan? Are council's going to be passing a resolution in support? What does finalizing the plan look like to you?
Finalizing the plan looks like, first of all, we have a final document that shows the alignment for the 27 miles as it changes. Then we will go to each municipality and ask for their approval, we will go to the RTA and ask for their approval, we will go to the Michigan Transportation Commission and ask for their approval.
Okay.
And then, once we have that document, I've already started some grant applications to do some demonstration projects. We have talked about a bike lane from 6 to 696 as one of the first demonstrations that we would like to move forward on.
I appreciate all that effort. And I just wanted to say, I'm very, I've been such, so involved with this in the last three years, I just want to let you know to be mindful about how you talk about the 696 ditch. We didn't ignore the intersection as a member of the committee. The ditch is so big of a problem that we decided that it needed its own study, that if we lumped it into the LPA and sent it to the FTA for approval, that we wouldn't score high enough, because we threw in another project onto that plan. So that intersection is a mess, so I'm really glad that you have been able to find grant money to continue on with that conversation with the Pleasant Ridge. And Ferndale, I think, is very supportive of making that more pedestrian-friendly of crossing over the highway, so. And I'm also looking forward to seeing how you continue the Transform Woodward website as a way to communicate out to all of the residents along the corridor about what's happening with Complete Streets, Bus Rapid Transit. That was something that was very important to all of the cities who were representing the task force along the corridor, so I hope to see that as continued as a way to inform people about what's, all the positive things going on with the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks again, Debbie, for coming, really do appreciate it.
Thank you, and I'd invite anyone who'd like to attend our meetings, that I'll gladly let you know when we do meet. We have one this Thursday, Pleasant Ridge, 8:00 a.m., and we'll actually be having a presentation of the development at the State Fairgrounds.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have called the audience. Call to the audience is limited to a strict half an hour, and we ask each individual to limit their comments to three minutes or less. If you would like to speak to council about any item not on the agenda, please state your name and address, and if you're not comfortable giving your address, there's a sign-up sheet in the back. Mrs. Davis.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm wearing three hats, so I hope you're generous with me tonight. First is, I want to talk about the senior spaghetti dinner at the Jerry Culic Center this Thursday evening from 5:00 to 7:00. You know, we seniors cook our little fingers off. It's $6 for adults, $5 for seniors, and it's $3 for children 12 and under, or maybe it's 10 and under. I don't think they've thought through how much a 10-year-old can eat. And I'm sorry to say that we're not going to have our two favorite servers this year. We're not going to have Councilman Martin and Councilwoman Polica. So the second thing I want to announce is, on October 22nd, which is a week from this coming Wednesday, we have the Senior Mayor Town Hall Meeting, and everybody is welcome, it's free, you don't have to be a senior. It's a very informal meeting, and the mayor asks questions, a lot of things get tossed around and discussed that you might not hear about anywhere else. And sometimes, the senior ladies provide cookies for this meeting, so that's just, you know, an incentive. And also, I saw that Councilman Piana put on Facebook that if you say the.
Councilwoman.
What?
You said councilman.
I'm sorry, councilwoman, yes. There's no doubt that you're councilwoman. But I saw you put on Facebook that if you say the secret word, that something fun will happen at the Ferndale Senior Bake Sale. Well, if you come to the Mayor Town Hall Meeting, you'll find out what that secret word is. And the third thing I have to announce is, after two years, the Historic Museum is again doing a historic home tour, and it's a holiday tour. It'll be on December 13th, which is a Saturday, the same day as the Ice Festival? The Ice Festival. But I think the Ice Festival is over at 3:00 or 4:00, and the home tour is from.
Three to seven.
Three to seven, thanks. And the tickets are $15. You can get them from me, you can get them at the Historic Museum. We're hoping to have eight houses. We already have two absolutely spectacular homes this year that we'll be showing. And I'm here so early in advance of this event to tell you, to ask you to think about it, if yourself or any of your neighbors have something intriguing about your house, maybe something intriguing about the way you decorate it, maybe all the tree decorations came from grandma, maybe you've knocked out walls, maybe you have pictures of your renovations of the home, whatever it is. We're not looking for home beautiful, we're looking for interesting homes within the city. And don't worry if you're not a historic home, because as Gary Taylor from the Historic Society has pointed out, a home is historic if it's built from 1950 till now, which means 90% of the homes in Ferndale are historic. So even if you have a, I know the last time we did it, we had these darling guys on Buster, they had a, what, about a 700, 800 square foot home, and they had, yeah, they had done quite a bit to it, and they had some cute decorations supplied by both their parents, and it was an absolute darling home. So, and we also had a 1950's ranch across from Gary Park that was done up very nicely. So please contact me, I'll give my number, although everybody has my number. It's 248-541-5888. So again, come to the spaghetti dinner on Thursday, this Thursday, come to the Mayor Town Hall, Senior Town Hall Meeting, a week from Wednesday, October 22nd, and that's at 11:00 a.m. at the Culic Center, and it's free, and you don't have to be a senior to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne.
Francine Jeanne took up the whole 30 minutes.
Are we really surprised?
No. Francine Hatchman, 355 West Troy. I'm also wearing two hats, I'm wearing the hat of the DDA. This Thursday, we're having Fido Does Ferndale, it's our annual meet and greet for all the dogs in town. Come, and there's prizes, there's parades, my dog Joey and myself, we are the parade marshals, and we take pride in doing that every year. And then also, from the Arts Commission, I'm here to announce our first Salon Sunday, which is going to take place this Sunday, October 19th, at Dino's, from 6:00 to 7:00. And the salon, it's taken from the 16th and 17th century, and then it was resurrected in 1920, 1930. It's a place where people would have a restaurant or a home, and artists would get together for an hour and play instruments, recite poetry, and then talk about it after. And we are creating that atmosphere for our Salon Sundays from the Arts Commission, and that's this Sunday, 6 o'clock, at Dino's Restaurant. Okay. Karen's next, I think.
Karen Toomey, Secretary of the Ferndale Board of Education for, I'm in the sixth year of service on that role, by the way, and would like to announce that I am actually running to try and stay in that position, along with my colleagues Jennifer Latash and Nan Ker Mueller. And on that note, I do also want to give a little plug that there is going to be an event coming up on October 25th hosted by CFF, where you'll be able to meet all the candidates for the school board. Details will be coming shortly. Boy, what a privilege to see all these presentations tonight. I was inspired by the beautification awards, because I know that we just had a team of parents and community members that were at our middle school campus, cleaning out the beds and making that rather beautiful. So I want to thank them, as I always like to start with thank yous. I also would like to thank you and all those community members I saw coming out to our wonderful homecoming tailgate, so I hope everybody had fun. I know that we did, and appreciated seeing everybody there. First of all, I want to ask, did you know Ferndale Schools has two fantastic Ferndale preschool options? And it may seem strange to be asking this now, but as the parent of a child who, when he was my first, found himself not quite fitting into the preschool I had chosen for him, I did choose midway through the school year to relocate, and so I just want to always make sure, you know, mother to mother, that I'm offering those options. So we do, in Ferndale, have two options. We have a Little Eagles preschool, and we also have the Grant Early Childhood Center. The Grant program has limited openings for three and four-year-olds. It is a Head Start program and a Great Start readiness program. Both the Head Start and Great Start readiness programs at Grant are run together by highly-qualified teachers with bachelor's degrees in early childhood development, and they provide a fantastic place for children to prepare for kindergarten, meet new friends, and grow physically, socially, emotionally, and intellectually. These fantastic programs are free, so those who qualify should definitely go and check that out. We do also have a Little Eagles program, and that preschool offers early childhood education based around comprehensive and rich research with the individual child in mind. This program offers full-day and half-day programs, as well as after-school care for children two and a half to four years old. So if anybody is looking for a place for their special darling, please know to think of Ferndale first. We, as you may have heard, have started having superintendent advisory committees, one is meeting tonight, so if you're regretting that you're not able to be there, because we're here, I want you to know that there is another opportunity. We have on October 1st our next meet and greet, the Superintendent Night at Embrew. So anybody is welcome to come out and support the Ferndale Education Foundation, and you'll get a chance to speak with our superintendent, Blake Pruitt.
I'm sorry, I think you said October 1st, but maybe.
21st.
21st, thank you.
Yeah, October 21st. Apologize. So you may have heard that we have a UHS sophomore who gets a charge out of engineering. Along with six other Metro Detroit middle and high school students, University High School 10th Grader Kalen Riley has spent the last four months building a dune buggy and converting it to run on electric power at Next Energy in Detroit. The student's engineering effort fosters the growth of young talent and enables hands-on experiences in STEM, which stands for, of course, science, technology, engineering, and math-related fields, collectively known as RUN DC. The team members showcased their efforts at an event to drum up financial support to enable them to participate in the high school Solar Car Challenge in Texas next year. During the event, students spoke to the audience about what they have learned, demonstrated the vehicle technology, and presented a video they created about their typical day working on the vehicle. As of now, I am told that my job title does not include an opportunity to ride the dune buggy, but I'm going to keep working on that. The GM Tech Center recently donated 200 books to Roosevelt, so each year, the GM Tech Center sponsors a community volunteer effort, and for 2014, the employees elected to hold a book drive for the students K6 and chose Ferndale Schools as the recipient. So the employees raised approximately 200 books for the children. Ferndale High School's Jacob Keller.
You're just about out of your time.
Okay.
So if you could wrap up your comments.
So we also had Ferndale High School Jacob. So we also had Ferndale High School Jacob Keller, who won league tournament in the singles. So he is a tennis champion. And we are also proudly announcing our support Michigan's OK2SA initiative, which is another initiative working towards safety so that students can feel they have the opportunity to anonymously report things that they notice are happening in their school. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, and you're welcome back anytime. And if we know, we'll return presentations, so you can have as much time as you need to update us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
Members of council, Ms. Brown, Mr. Chris, Ms. Lynch, Roger Schmidt, Vice President of the Ferndale Historical Society. I believe you all are aware of the fact that we have recently been subjected to a lawsuit. And I believe you also know that that lawsuit has been dismissed. If I may, for your benefit and the audiences, give you a few of the highlights of our odyssey. It all began back in July of 2013 when former Mayor Robert McGee came to the museum. He met with Jean Spang and Gary Taylor with a book proposal through Arcadia Publishing, which is the Images of America books. Sounded really good and they decided to work with him. He then asked that Ms. Spang sign the contract with Arcadia along with him as a co-author. As they say, the ink was barely dry when Mr. McGee had a change of heart and became very, I don't know if the right word is belligerent, but at one point he got into Mr. Taylor's face and told him he did not have to deal with him, that only, he was only going to deal with Ms. Spang. And the, pretty much the Historical Society was out of the picture. Ms. Spang was so upset that she secured a lawyer and had herself released from the contract with Arcadia. When she backed away from it, so did the Historical Society. Not long after that, we started receiving threatening letters from Mr. McGee's attorney. We dealt with those threats on our own for quite some time. In January of this year, he had a deadline with Arcadia, which evidently he did not meet, and Arcadia released him from his contract. No penalties, no lawsuits, no fines, simply released him from his contract. Not long after that, his attorney contacted us and said that Mr. McGee was suing us for tortious interference with his book. At that point, we had no choice but to get an attorney of our own. One of the things he was asking for was, amongst other things, was $25,000 in damages and to dissolve the Historical Society. So we secured the services of Paquette and Kelly, and they did an outstanding job for us, their husband and wife team. Immediately, they started, his attorney started pounding us with requests under the discovery portion of this lawsuit, requesting outrageously enormous amounts of material and then scheduling depositions and canceling them and rescheduling them and canceling them. And the case was assigned to Circuit Court Judge Wendy Potts of Oakland County. And she scoffed at this case from the get-go and pretty much alluded to the fact that she didn't want frivolous lawsuits like this clogging up her docket. And she ordered us, both parties, to go to mediation. Mediation was several weeks ago and we met downtown with mediator and the lawyers. And for eight hours, nothing really was accomplished, except that the mediator came away with the feeling that this board was united against Mr. McGee. Evidently, several days after that, the mediator and the attorneys had a conference call. And the mediator told Mr. McGee's attorney, "You have seven counts in your complaint, six against Mr. Taylor, one against the Historical Society, and you haven't offered one credible piece of evidence against any of those complaints."
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're short on time, so if you could finish up your comments.
Anyway, he then said that Mr. Taylor did have quite a bit of solid evidence for a countersuit for defamation of character. Almost immediately, Mr. McGee asked to drop the lawsuit in return for which we would not sue him. And that's where we are today.
Thank you very much.
Sherri A. Wells, 315 West Troy. Anyone who's already gotten their absentee ballot will see, under State Board of Education running for office is Sherri A. Wells for the Green Party, and yes, that's me. Anyone who knows me knows that I do my homework. I did my homework when I ran for school board a number of years ago, including taking up a challenge of riding the school bus for a day and learned a lot about how those things are handled. So that is me. And at least Ferndale is privileged to know me better than any other city in this state and welcome your vote. Someone told me it's a little bit difficult if you're otherwise trying to do straight party, but make the effort, please.
Thank you, Sherri.
Paul Kish, 707 West Tasylhurst. I'm going to keep this one positive, April Lynch. You promised to respond in letters, and you have done that.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Hello.
I'm from 324 Kensington, Ferndale, between 8 and 9, building in 8 Mile. I've been a resident for 30 years. I watch these meetings on TV all the time. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
And I'm proud of the city council. But I came up here because the other day I was in the house and I heard the worst noise in my house. I ran to the bathroom and it looked like All Faithful. My toilet was guzzling water up three feet out of the air. The stopper on the inside of my toilet was up. Water was everywhere. So I looked outside and the guys were cleaning out the drains, which it's a good idea because we've got so many trees, you know, the roots, and they had the camera going through there. I told them, I says, "You know, you guys are doing a fine job, but I don't know if I'm the only one getting this and I don't know why I'm the only one that came up here to bring it to your attention." Because what if my grandson was sitting on that toilet potty training? And, you know, or if I was, it would have given me a heart attack. I'm not a spring chicken, you know? But anyways, I wanted to bring it to your attention that they should give you warning before they come around to do that so you can do something to prepare for it, you know what I'm saying?
Lloyd still here?
Is Lloyd here?
He's at the gas leak. He's down at the site of the gas leak.
Oh, okay. Okay. If you can leave your information, we'll pass on your comments to Lloyd, our DPW director. He's at unsighted a gas leak right now, so he's not-
I talked to the guy in the street and he told me, he says, "Well, if you need any cleaning equipment to clean it up and everything, the steel paper, it's just water, but smelly water."
Yeah.
But it made a mess. And this is the second time it's happened to me. The first time I didn't bring it to your attention, but this time I am. And no one else. And I asked them, the neighbors, and they said, "Yeah, they had the same problem." So I don't know. It's a good idea to clean the roots out.
Is that a ranch?
Yes, a little ranch. There's three of them there.
Right. Okay. All right.
And then my house didn't flood over the-
So all your pipes are underneath?
Yes.
Underneath the-
What happens is that water goes down. I was, I used a land surveyor for 22 years.
Okay.
So and I used to stake for the sanitary and it, so I noted exactly, the leaves that go to the house, you know, off the sanitary.
Right.
The pressure and the water that comes from snake in that drainer shoots it up there and pooh comes out like All Faithful, that's what I'm-
No, pun intended, right?
Boom.
No pun intended, huh?
No. But it makes a heck of a noise and really, I was kind of panicky when I first started. And then I have another question. They closed the alley down behind my house. I'm 66 years old. Five or six times I've been there to cut all the trees down. I don't own a tree. I own one little small tree that's not even grown yet. And I've been cutting those and the people that live behind me, they're younger and they haven't once attempted to cut those down. And I was wondering whose responsibility that is.
Where's Derek?
Yeah, we'd have to look into it.
Yeah, if you, would like to leave your contact information with Derek, he'll look into it and get back with you. I don't know the answer, I'll hand-
Yeah, it could be a couple of things. It depends on where the tree's actually growing, how it's projecting into the alley and what part of the alley.
There's a bunch of trees. They just grow, they just, and they ruin the fence. And I go back there and cut them down. I paid people to chainsaw them down. But the people behind me, they just feel they don't have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, if you leave me your address, if you get it to us, we'll send them out.
Happy to. Take a look.
And I was talking about, for the, my niece did get flooded out and she filled out an application. I guess she was denied. And I guess a lot of people were denied because of FEMA's coming along. So that's what I was worried about when I was talking to him about FEMA.
Sure, sure.
And that about does it. I just think that we should have some warning a week ahead or somehow have some warning when they're coming to, because they have to do it, but we need to be ready for it, you know?
Yeah, no, I appreciate your comments and coming down. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll make sure Lloyd gets that address.
Okay, great. Anyone else for call the audience?
How you doing? Brian Pressey, 305 West Troy. Is it Ms. Piana? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I've watched your statement from four weeks ago a couple of times online. Just going to bring up one statement. I'll try to quote you the best I can. There are a couple of words I couldn't quite get. You said during the statement, quote, "We've lost 10% of our population in the last 10 years and every entering or surrounding suburb around us has lost population, including Detroit as a region. The only city that hasn't lost population is Birmingham. They've increased by 4% in the last 10 years. And why? They are redeveloping their downtown. They are providing different options for people to come in and live and work there. And I think that is why their downtown is being very prosperous," unquote. How did you come to that conclusion?
How did I come to that conclusion? Part of, what did I, what did I look at? I read some of SEMCOG's census data. We also have some numbers that went into the locally preferred alternative analysis that I was heavily involved in. What I can do is provide that links to you so you can find them.
Please. Yeah, just, and this could, you could totally be right on this, but without any type of quantitative data to do my own analysis, you know, I-
I could leave citations up at council when I'm talking.
Sure, no, absolutely. But from my analysis, you're the only one who's made an extended statement on their opinion of Phase 1 or that idea of a development. I don't know of any of you given a documented opinion on what you-
You know what? I offer, why don't I meet with you independently? I'm trying to do outreach as we all are, so let's have a separate conversation offline and we'll go through and I'll tell you more about what I think.
Yeah, great. And just, what I would suggest to the people at Ferndale who watch this and the city council members, that statement as is is insufficient, you know, to support, you know, to use that as a support for such a development. So, you know, you have a quantitative outcome, but, you know, I know you said you have urban planning class background, so anybody with an advanced degree in development economics would understand. Quantitative data goes into getting quantitative outcomes. So obviously, I'm sure you can provide that to the council and citizens as well. But once again, is there any documentation of what you guys believe individually, on your websites or in City Hall or on?
Not formally for me. No, and essentially, just to make a comment, that we are still very much in that research phase about any development of that nature. And so I don't know until that comes out, it is necessarily appropriate to get a final position on that.
You don't have to give a final position, but you could say something, I mean-
I just did. I want to see the rest of the data and as we-
But how do you feel about the initial thing sent out? I mean, you don't have a, you don't have an opinion on it? Because if you don't have an opinion, then we have to analyze who's sitting on our council. I mean, if you see something and you can't come to an opinion, even if it's preliminary, right?
I appreciate your feedback. This call to the audience isn't intended to be a debate back and forth.
Oh, that's fine.
I'd be happy to meet with you myself as well.
Absolutely.
And I'd be happy to share my initial impressions. Okay? So if you leave your contact information with Joe and we'll make sure we reach out to you.
Yeah, I have a comment too, but I mean, I agree with Ms. Piana because, because I trust her judgment. I've lived in this city for 58 years. And I can tell you right now, and I can't speak for Birmingham Royal Low Plus originally towards anything, I don't know anything about that, but I do know our population is down. I've been here long enough. Probably too long. Probably these people want me out now. But our population is down, that's all.
Right, but what's the reason for that?
I, I'm not going to comment on it.
Exactly. So I mean, it doesn't hold a lot of weight. I understand how you feel and what you see, but-
This structure right now isn't to be for debate, but I do very much want to talk to you about it. So if you just leave your information, we'll make sure we get into it.
I'll be looking forward to hearing all your opinions.
Sounds great. Thank you. Anyone else for call the audience?
I just had a quick question. Maria Gary, 306 West Troy. I noticed there's a Planning Commission meeting this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. And Melanie, Ms. Piana, you sit on that commission. There's not an agenda up. Do you know what the topic of conversation will be at this meeting?
I thought I saw one earlier.
I checked before I came, so in that time it may have been posted.
There isn't one listed. So if we could add that?
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
It's Wednesday.
It's not Thursday?
It's not Thursday. Thursday was the alternative date while the Port and Police Station were on a renovation because the city council chambers were being used. So we've gone back to our regular meeting schedule of Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay. So the agenda should be going up?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Very good. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are all items under, they're considered to be routine by city council and will be enacted with one motion. And I will read the consent agenda. A, approval of the minutes of regular and special meetings held September 8, 2014, and regular and special meetings held September 22, 2014, is submitted by the city clerk. Approval of the contract with Leonard Brothers Data Management Inc. for storage for city records is submitted by the city clerk. Approval to purchase a custom cabinet slash tray from Odyssey Specialty Vehicles of Wharton, New Jersey for $5,935 to be charged to operating supplies. Approval of the IT support agreement between Republic Parking System and the City of Ferndale for an annual cost not to exceed $46,000 per year to be charged to account 101-179-775-105 through October 31, 2015. Approval to purchase a John Deere WHP 48A walk-behind commercial mower and a John Deere 987 commercial zero-turn mower from Bader &amp; Sons governmental pricing program for $19,648 to be charged to general fund, motor pool, and capital. And then finally, approval of the bills and payrolls is submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by city council finance committee. What is the pleasure, council?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Pollocka. Carolyn, will you call the rule?
Me, but. Councilmembers, Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Kerry's?
Thank you. Next, we move on to our regular agenda item. In the first-
I'm sorry. I did want to bring up one item on there, just a clarification. I don't have an issue with it. You kind of went through that really quickly. Item number D, approval of the IT support agreement between Republic Parking Systems and the City of Ferndale for an annual cost not to exceed $46,000 per year to be charged to the account, et cetera. I just want people to know that may not have seen or listened to last council meeting that we had a lengthy discussion about this position and some details. And that's why we have it on the consenting agenda, because this was just finalizing the agreement that all of the conversation actually took place several weeks ago. So I don't want someone to think that we're just passing, you know, positions willy-nilly if they didn't catch last, the last council meeting, so.
Okay, great point. Thank you. So moving on to regular agenda item A, consideration to appoint Kate Timrowski, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31, 2015. Eric?
Yes, we're glad to introduce Kate to city council. We've had several people express interest in the Planning Commission openings. We did at one point have three openings. We filled one subsequently. Kate is recommended to fill the, one of the second of the three remaining spots. The mayor has recommended her appointment. She's been a Ferndale resident for a short time, but has a background in planning and is working through her master's degree at Wayne State, I believe, in planning as well. So with that, I'll introduce Kate to let her talk about herself a little bit, and you guys ask any questions.
Hello, my name is Katie Temerowski, and I'm super excited to be in front of you. I believe that I would bring dedication and enthusiasm to the position. I grew up in Gross Point, but I came here growing up because, I don't know, Ferndale is a lot more fun. I have been living here for about two and a half years now. I went to University of Michigan undergrad, did political science and urban studies, did a lot of studying of master plans and developments. Also was very active in the metro Detroit area during that time. I worked with the Michigan Preservation Resource Network, oh, sorry, Michigan Historic Preservation Network, working with Historic Fort Wayne, getting a historic designation and working to get grants for renovations. We were, I moved on to New Orleans after graduation, worked with the Preservation Resource Network, or Resource Center of New Orleans, working with the community, getting designations for homes owned by jazz musicians, which is pretty cool. Moved back, I've been working at a law firm, very interested and love Ferndale, super excited to be here in front of you. A little nervous, but don't mind that. Sorry.
Fine. We really appreciate your willingness to serve. Does anyone have any questions for Kate?
Nope, just want to say welcome.
Thank you.
And you're coming on at a very interesting time, so thank you.
That's what I'm so excited too, is like, I feel like this is a really great time and very pivotal, but interesting, so.
Great, well, thank you again. With that, I'll accept a motion.
I move to appoint Katie Temerowski to the Planning Commission for the term ending December 31, 2015.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Polica. Call the roll.
Council members, Lennon?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Martin?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. Regular agenda item B, consideration of rezoning for St. James Church. Eric, is this you?
Good evening. We're here to present a rezoning request from representatives of St. James Parish and their associated partners for the potential redevelopment of the St. James Parish, mostly the older school building and the remainder of the site. These gentlemen, and I'll introduce them in a minute, have partnered with the parish and the archdiocese to contemplate a senior assisted living facility with some of the outbuildings, the old school building and portions of the church. To do that, it was noted early on that the site itself was zoned inappropriately for that type of use. The site was Zon C2, which is a general commercial zoning district. That zoning district within the city zoning ordinance does not allow assisted living facilities as a development use within the district. After much discussion, and that might be an extraordinary understatement, with the city attorney, the Planning Commission staff, we kind of plotted a course of action that included a potential rezoning of the property to what is the R3 single-family slash multiple-family zoning district, which does allow for a senior assisted living facility. It should be noted as well that the parish use itself and the church use, place of worship, was also what is considered to be an existing non-conforming use within the C2 general commercial zoning district. So in evaluating the situation and discussing it with the Planning Commission and internally, the rezoning request does two things. One, it eliminates the existing nonconformance of the place of worship, which does remove some restrictions as related to the church use itself at the site. And two, it does allow a senior assisted living facility project to go forward within the district. So that rezoning request was planned, presented to the Planning Commission. A public hearing was held in accordance with the law and our zoning ordinance in relationship to such a request. The Planning Commission did review it and has forwarded it to City Council with the recommendation for approval. So that is in front of you tonight for the parcel. It should also be noted that if successful and if approved, the applicant would still have to come back to both staff and the Planning Commission for a approved site plan and what is a, or a special land use permit as well, which also require an additional public notice and to appear before council as well. So the process is a little bit extended, this is the first step in it, but the Planning Commission did review it and recommend that council approve the rezoning to R3 single-family residential. So with that, I'll introduce Bob Thorn, and he's here representing the Woodward LLC, Woodward Senior LLC, who partnered with the archdiocese to consider the redevelopment of the site.
Welcome.
Good evening, councilwoman and councilmen. I got that earlier. Thank you for hearing us. Derek did a wonderful job explaining really what it is. And what we've done is that, have you noticed, because you go up and down Woodward, is that the school has really been empty for about four years. And we are joint ventured with the archdiocese and Father Paul Chateau, the pastor and the CFO of the parish, and my partner, John Marusich, who's the architect of the project. And we've joined venture to make it a profitable situation with the parish. The parish, as you're all aware, that merged with the Lady of Fatima, and Father decided on his own accord to try to keep St. James open. And this is the method of keeping it open, which is giving additional funds to the parish through this joint venture partnership. It's a 100-bed senior citizen living. It's very compatible with the parish, compatible with the neighborhood, and very compatible with the community. And we think it'll be a wonderful attribute, and we appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. Are you turning these into individual units? The 100-bed facility, you're gonna make all these schoolrooms individual living quarters?
Yes. There'll be individual beds within the school itself.
And obviously parking's not an issue over there, but are you utilizing the gym and the kitchen and? I know that school very well.
The answer's yes.
Yes, everything's gonna be utilized.
Everything's gonna be utilized, we're utilizing-
The old rectory and all that.
The rectory and the convent, and all of it's gonna be utilized for the same facility.
Okay. Are they gonna be individual units or just rooms with beds? Or are these individual apartments?
No, they're individual units with beds. I mean, it's assisted living. Some of them may be set for a little bit larger for extended stay in the assisted living, but right now, you know, that mix still has to be accomplished, yeah.
And I think it's important to note that the rezoning, and one of the things that we've talked about with them is the flexibility for them to hit the right spot with the archdiocese and the church. As they go forward, they'll start to evaluate what is the right balance between actual assisted living units. Could be anything from senior housing all the way up to assisted living. And evaluating it with the Planning Commission, they made the determination this fits very much in line with the concept of aging in place. We have very few facilities close to the downtown in the city that allow our residents to age within the community and then be able to stay in close proximity to the downtown, we've heard, and rightfully so, the relationship between walking and health and economic development and all these things. And this type of facility, at least as it's been reviewed by the Planning Commission, we feel fits right into that. So I think the potential development could have a range of any of those type uses, individual apartments for senior housing, up to a full-service assisted living facility, so.
Through the chair, that detail will come back to council as part of the special land use process.
Right, thank you.
I have a question actually for Derek. Are there any other properties along Woodward that are currently zoned R3? Will this be the only property that's zoned R3?
I believe so, the only one with direct Woodward frontage, and I don't have a map in front of me, I'll say I believe so from recollection. The immediately adjacent properties to the west are all zoned R3, but this would be the only one with frontage on the Woodward corridor.
Okay. And does that, given that, does that limit properties on Woodward to have residential development in the future?
It does within, potentially outside, you have, the majority of the property along Woodward is zoned, two separate zoning districts, one being C2, which is general commercial, which is more restrictive on the type of residential. It does allow for upper-story residential units, but not the senior assisted living. And then there's the CBD, which is even more flexible than the C2 that does allow upper residential and certain type of residential. It was the senior assisted that was the restricted use, not necessarily residential in general.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Other questions, if any, could?
No.
Good. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go back up.
I make a motion to approve the rezoning application to rezone 238 and 241 Pearson Road from C2 general commercial and P1 vehicle parking to R-3 single slash multiple-family residential side well numbers 25-34-176-059 and 25-34-176-056, subject to the following findings. Do I have to list each of the findings?
No.
As presented on- As reflected in the communication of October 8, 2014 would be sufficient, council. As stated.
I support.
Move by Polica, supported by Lennon. Any other discussion?
As the representative, City Council representative to the Planning Commission, I think, I mean, you guys just all asked the same questions of the Planning Commission in terms of understanding the legal changes in our zoning. But as we look forward to updating the master plan, I think this project has uncovered some more questions for the Planning Commissioners to consider about residential potential along the Woodward corridor going forward. And I think it was an easier decision to make in support of it because C2 already had the upper residential unit, so living was allowed, but obviously not for assisted living. And I think a reuse of a vacant school is excellent for our downtown. We definitely don't have enough transitional housing to keep our seniors in Ferndale, and I've had personal experience dealing with an aging grandparent moving from house, condo, assisted living unit. And those are some really difficult challenges for a family to make, and so I'm glad that we're going to be offering this type of product, housing product, in Ferndale. And I'm excited that this is gonna go forward. The one challenge I think we will have is the transition of other property along Woodward that is adjacent to the school, some clubs that still have a liquor license. I think we'll need to watch out and be careful of any new tenants in those buildings become very good neighbors to their new residential neighbors.
Yeah, I would agree. I certainly like this project. I guess I do have one question. What does the timeline look like for this?
Great question.
With approvals and everything else, when would you expect to be open for business?
I'm sorry, again, please?
What does the timeline look like for this? When would you expect to be open for business?
We're supposed to be opening for business in the fall. It's coming fall.
Okay.
2015.
Oh. Not like, not like the November fall. That's correct.
Any other question or discussion from council?
No.
All right, with that, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Council members, Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Martin?
Yes. Motion carries. Item C, consideration of rezoning for 853 East Eight Mile Road. Michelle?
Good evening, council. Michelle Foster, City Clerk. Tonight we have the owners of 853 East Eight Mile. They have submitted an application for rezoning, another rezoning. This property is currently zoned OS, Office Service, and they would like to be rezoned to C2 general commercial. Staff has reviewed the application, and the proposed change is consistent with the master plan and the future land use plan as adopted by council. It is master plan for general commercial. The main difference between the OS and the C2 zoning would be retail, which is why the applicant is requesting this zoning, for the majority. I'll let them speak to that more. So the uses, the potential uses of the C2 category would be compatible with the surrounding uses and contiguous with the surrounding development of the Meyer now, so that's developing more commercially. The site design is compatible with the future proposed uses, and the site design, if they choose to develop, would come back to Planning Commission and to staff. So we have discussed and had held a public hearing at the last Planning Commission meeting, and subsequently, the Planning Commission made a motion to recommend the approval of the rezoning. So with that, I'll have Mrs. Randy Rodd and Laura.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening.
Evening.
I have one question. If I remember correctly, that's the old pawn shop?
No, it is not. The old pawn shop is on the west side of Fair Street. This is on the east side of Fair Street.
So by Kitchen Concepts, right there?
Between Kitchen Concepts and-
At Fair Street, okay.
Right, the property that's along that stretch there.
All right, go ahead, please.
Yeah, as Michelle had said, and thank you so much for your help and Derek's as well, and also talking to the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, Jordan over there. Currently, we, as Michelle had said, there's three residential houses and a commercial building there, slightly non, the residential obviously non-conforming to the current OS and the commercial that's been there historically. My dad's been an owner of it for 30 years now, and as, you know, both Ferndale's developing as well as Eight Mile with Meyer across the street, we were hoping to currently take down what's currently there and build a new strip center, residential center, or retail center, I should say. Potentially with the C2 rezoning also having the ability to put potentially residential on the second story there. Obviously, not only the houses there have been there since the 20s or 30s that, you know, not necessarily the most beautiful thing to look at, but also being that it is on Eight Mile, it's a bit difficult as far as sound and things like that goes to continue to attract tenants. And I think just a facelift of that area in general is much needed with, as I said, the Meyer development across the street, kind of similar to that. It seems like it's not only a great time to do that, but since there has not been much development along the Eight Mile corridor, since I think the rezoning has taken place, if any, clearly with OS there, it hasn't necessarily had the attraction to do that. So right now, with the current proposal, I mean, obviously this is more for rezoning than a site plan, but, you know, building a new development there with brick and windows and improving the appearance of that.
Yeah, one of the things that we realized in developing this whole thing when it started was this brings a new fresh face that comes along Eight Mile Road, and this is one of the first things that people traveling along that corridor see of Ferndale. There's, you know, a hodgepodge of different types of businesses there. We've had retail there before, so, and the retail has survived, but this way it really cleans up that whole area. We are attempting to take the house that's gonna be trapped in between Kitchen Concepts and ourselves and negotiate with that owner there and include that in our project, should that develop, that'll be incorporated into our project. So if we want to have a little trapped area there, that is something that we've paid attention to and we've started negotiating on, we'll see what happens. That area there with the heavy traffic of trucks, it takes, you know, it needs, it needs a facelift. I mean, it's just getting tired there, so we're trying to improve it.
Great. Any questions?
Hello?
No?
Really?
All right, with that, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move that City Council approves the rezoning of 853 East Eight Mile Road, civil numbers 25-35-377-054, 25-35-377-051, and 25-35-377-050, from OS, Office Service, to C2 general commercial, based on the subject findings listed.
Is there support?
There's support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Lennon. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say I appreciate the city staff's diligent review of this rezoning request. The Planning Commission felt a little bit differently with staff on the potential for rezoning. I think our Planning Commission, when they redid the master plan, were very intent on trying to encourage new uses, particularly focused on office space, but in the last five years since the master plan was updated, that has yet to be materialized. So I think the interest here is having productive building space along the corridor, which is why the Planning Commission, I'm speaking on their behalf, thought that this was a good request for rezoning. With that, we are redoing the master plan update in the next year and can look at some of these nuances that are popping up, and which is why the state law says you should review your master plan every five years, because things change constantly. And I think this is just one of them.
I'll just say thank you. I appreciate the reinvestment in an area that could, you know, certainly benefit from additional attention, so I appreciate your thoughtfulness in bringing this forward. Any other discussion? All right, with that, would you call the roll?
Council members, Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Martin?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Item D, consideration of a resolution to amend rules and procedures regarding December meeting dates. Carolyn?
I'll handle this one. This is consistent with the practice of the last few years, whereas we have taken the two statutory December meetings and scheduled, rescheduled them so they would fall on the same date in the middle of the month, given that it's- on the same date in the middle of the month, given that it's a month with pretty much two weeks of holiday at the end, where not a lot of business going on, a lot of people traveling. I know Councilmember Pollocka had already mentioned that he would be on vacation and not available for that typical second meeting in February. So we are proposing, um, that we move the regular, the first regular meeting of December to December fifteenth at six PM. We would have the audit presentation at that time, and then move the second regularly scheduled meeting of December to December fifteenth at seven, and that would be for all other business.
Okay, what's the pleasure of council with this? Are there questions?
Move for me.
Then I need a motion.
I make a motion, once I find it.
You could just adopt the resolution.
Uh, I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there support?
I support.
Moved by Pollocka, supported by Piana. Any other discussion? Then if you call the roll.
Council members Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Martin.
Yes, motion carries. And lastly, regular agenda, item E, consideration of increase in compensation for election inspectors.
Well, this is something near and dear to my heart. We, as you know, back in twenty twelve, when we had the presidential election, the city of Ferndale experienced long lines, and as a result, we had an election improvement committee that got together and discussed possible changes. At that time, we discussed the possibility of increasing election worker pay to attract more workers, being that we always have trouble staffing our precincts. At that time, because we really were hitting the average pay in Oakland County and throughout the state, we tabled that idea. But a few things have happened recently that caused me to revisit this and bring it to council for consideration. The first is the increase in the state's minimum wage in September. Prior to this, based on a sixteen hour day, we were paying our inspectors slightly over the minimum wage. With the increase, um, our workers will now be making under the minimum wage if we do not give them an increase in their pay rate, aver, you know, if you average it over a sixteen hour full, um, election work day. The second thing is, um, some of the Oakland County communities were pulling together a survey because of the minimum wage issue on rates, and we find now that we are underneath, beneath the, um, average level in Oakland County in general, and slightly beneath the average along the Woodward corridor, which is our recruitment area for workers. And thirdly, in the last, um, few years since twenty twelve, we have attracted some new wonderfully computer skilled workers, trained them, had them work for us for an election, they did well, and then they went to work for other communities that pay them higher wages. I'd like to keep that from happening in the future. So the city manager and I sat down and talked this through, and with the minimum wage issue and council support, the resolution of, um, actual living wages and comparing ourselves to the Woodward corridor communities, I am recommending or asking council to please consider increasing our daily wage for an inspector from a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day to a hundred and fifty dollars a day, um, for chairpersons from one fifty a day to a hundred and eighty a day, for training from ten hours for a training session to ten dollars an hour, and typically we have a two hour training session. And then a, we've been offering a ten dollar incentive to get our inspectors to come in and do a electronic poll book lab, which is extra, um, practice on the EPB, and I would, I would leave that at the ten dollar incentive. If these, if council sees fit to approve these adjustments, we'd see an approximate increase in election costs of twenty-five hundred dollars an election.
All right, any questions for Cheryl?
Don't have one for Cheryl Lynn. I have one for, uh, our, our lawyer, Mr. Crist. Given that I've committed myself to being a, uh, election worker this election, do I have to, um, remove myself from voting on this since I will financially benefit?
Yeah, I suggested you.
Yep.
Oh, hope myself a raise.
Congress doesn't.
Yeah, that's right. Congress does do it all the time.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I'll take a motion from anybody but Greg.
I move to approve an increase in election inspector compensation rates to a hundred and fifty a day for inspectors, a hundred and day, a hundred and eighty per day for precinct chairpersons, ten dollars an hour for training, and a ten dollar incentive for EPB skills lab.
Moved by Piana, support?
I support.
Support by Lennon?
Except for Greg.
Except for Greg.
Except for Greg.
It's a friendly amendment. No, with that, would you call the roll?
Council members Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Pollocka is abstaining and leaves. Mayor Pro Tim Martin.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Greg.
Very much.
So.
You got the first round, Greg.
We are now at call to council, so are there any updates from human resources? Chief? Great. Fire marshal, I'm sorry, I didn't say. Thank you. Derek, anything else?
Couple of, just a couple of quick ones. First, uh, we want to let council know that there was, uh, the city, along with about five other communities, I think you've heard us mention this before, were successful in rece, uh, receiving a MISTHA target market analysis grant for the Nine Mile Corridor, um, that's now official. Pontiac has been added to the group. It's basically a coalition of six communities that receive the grant through MISTHA. Um, it will study housing needs and other things along the Nine Mile Corridor over the next six to nine months. It's basically a group of six communities that applied for the grant through MISTHA to save on, uh, consultant fees and anything else, but we will be getting back six individual studies. So you'll see that coming forward over the next few weeks. We were also pleased to participate in the Transportation for Michigan event, uh, that was held recently. It was a tour of, uh, community leaders and transit, uh, folks, uh, through the state of Michigan. They've been attempting to highlight the needs of transit and transportation improvements throughout the community and the state. Ferndale was selected as a community to discuss some of our, uh, more progressive projects as it relates to connecting neighborhoods, um, road diets, road improvements. So we had a group of the bus tour stops here, um, and there should be some articles and some video that comes out on Metro Mode, uh, pretty soon related to it. They're following the tour throughout the Michigan, uh, to highlight the transit needs throughout the state. So we were pleased with that. I know council, we've talked, uh, repeatedly, and I think everybody is waiting to hear, uh, an update on the potential three sixty project. Uh, we are still working with the developer on coming up with, uh, the final conceptual designs, uh, how that would relate to potential parking needs, uh, what those costs and analysis would look like, and then to bring those forward to both to the planning commission and city council, hopefully over the next thirty to sixty days. We had hoped to be here by now, um, but as things continue to evolve, we want to make sure that, uh, that is as well evaluated as possible before it's presented to you. Um, and then also, the city has received proposals to reevaluate the master land use plan, um, that we received, I believe, nine or ten proposals. Those have been narrowed down to five finalists, and the interviews on those will take place, uh, October twenty-third, uh, so that should be a long day of interviews. Hopefully, we'll narrow it down to one. At that point, if we don't, we'll do some additional research, um, that'll be taken forward to the planning commission, and then ultimately, if there is a contract and a scope of services, that'll be brought forward to city council for review, hopefully within the next month, um, we'll have something in front of you. So that's what we have right now.
And just to confirm, we are going to be using, utilizing their services for the Parks and Rec master plan as well.
Correct. The Parks and Recs plan was due for a, an update as well, so we combined those, um, and incorporates, I believe, a sustainability piece, a, uh, the master land use plan piece, and also the Parks and Rec piece. We're trying to consolidate those into one process.
Huge.
Oh, yeah, we'd also like to, thank you. We did get a report tonight of a gas leak over at the city storage yard. Consumers is onsite, um, looking into that, but, uh, we've just got initial information on it. We don't think there's any issue. Consumers is onsite, they're keeping us updated. But we wanted to let everybody know if they do have an issue or see trucks out there working tonight, to contact Consumers Energy. That's not the city doing that work over there, even though it's a city owned piece of property. That is Consumers Energy. If you can't get ahold of Consumers, feel free to contact the city, uh, the Community and Economic Development Department, or the DPW Department, and we'll do our best to get you an update on, on what's going on overnight, so.
All right.
Joe, our chief innovation officer?
Counselors, I just wanted to provide an update on the program that we discussed during the September twenty-second city council meeting. During that meeting, council did approve of the endorsement of the sewer line warranty program that, uh, will be offered by the utility service partners, that is also endorsed by the National League of Cities. The official mailing for this program from USP should be going out this week or next week to residents, so residents can begin to see that in mail and, uh, in their mailbox. Because this was a public presentation, uh, residents can probably expect some competitors, uh, from other companies to be providing that mail, but I do want to be clear that the only company providing this program that was endorsed by the city of Ferndale and the National League of Cities is Utility Services Partners. We did provide information about their program and links to their website on the city's, uh, FerndaleMI.gov backslash services, backslash utilities. So just search for utilities on the website, and you should, uh, find yourself to that page.
Our logo will also be on the letter, so we just started to receive some, people were getting, or residents were getting, I think, um, requests from other companies, so.
Okay.
The competitors have paid attention, so just know that ours is the one that has our logo on it, and it will be out in the next two weeks.
Great, thank you very much. City clerks? I'm sorry, oh, I, do you have questions, sir?
Yes, um, and, uh, Stuart, he's talking about there that, uh, I want to.
Sir, would you mind coming to the microphone? The folks at home can't hear you.
Uh, when I, when I moved in my house, my, uh, water line was busted because they didn't turn the water up during the winter, and so I had to put on my plumbing when I moved into the house above ground. I've lived there over thirty years. And if I get this insurance, would that take care of my water line that, that, the main water line that was busted when I moved in?
Um, go ahead.
Well, I would, I would actually defer to the company to provide that solution or that discussion with you, but it is meant to protect the water line from your residence property line, back to the house, the connection point of the house, but it is a program provided by a third party that is not provided by the city, so it's not appropriate for us to speak about their program, but I'd be happy to contact information.
But it is designed, though, for, from your house to the right of way.
Yeah, there's two options. There's the sewer line program, and then there's a water line program. The sewer line is seven twenty-five, and the water line is five.
Five seven.
Five, yeah, something a month, so.
I just want if they do pre.
Oh, pre-existing conditions.
Cause that's what I want to know before I purchase it, that's what.
Yeah, I would have that discussion with them.
It's anything that happens from now, from the time you buy the insurance, not, you can't go back ten years or fifteen years and ask for that.
You can't go back.
No, no, it's just for moving forward.
All right, thanks. Uh, city clerk?
Well, if you're interested in being an election inspector for the city of Ferndale. We are always looking for, um, for workers to staff our precincts. We can offer, um, half day blocks of time if you can't commit to the full sixteen hours. We really are looking for people who, um, work well in a crowded hectic environment and have, um, very solid computer skills. Please contact my office. Our phone number is on the web, um, it's two four eight five four six two three eight four. And also, um, just want to promote absentee voter ballots for those of you who may be out of the community, um, on election day. If you think you may be out of the community, if you're sixty-five years old or older, and a few other reasons, if you're physically unable to attend the polls, you may get a ballot by mail. Fill it out, get it back to us by election night, and it will be counted by our absentee voter counter, counting board. There's going to be a full explanation of the AB voting process in the upcoming city newsletter.
Thank you very much. City manager?
Everybody stole my thunder, and I think we, uh, I think everybody knows the FEMA number by now. But just a reminder that we are at Coolic Monday through Saturday, eight to six, if you need help. We've heard a lot of feedback from residents that they've been very easy to work with. It's been very quick, somewhat painless, actually, which I thought would be a much more painful process to work through that, but majority of the feedback has been they've been extremely helpful in helping, making sure that all of our residents know exactly what their options are, and that's all of those options, everything from grants to the loans, and they are correct. Even the business loans are up to two million dollars that they're able to get at a very, very low interest rate. So we do encourage everybody who, even if they had their own insurance, to, you never know what you could qualify for if you're interested, and, and again, they've been very helpful.
Great, city attorney?
Uh, very briefly, uh, council a couple of weeks ago amended its, uh, agreement with Republic. Uh, the ordinance committee will be receiving a draft ordinance amendment as it relates to the, uh, future implementation of, uh, alternative parking enforcement, uh, with the goal hopefully of having that, uh, ordinance amendment for consideration on council at its next meeting in October.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Lennon?
Uh, other than that, uh, there's a potential for some heavy rain tomorrow, so, um, they're suggesting, or I am suggesting, and we are suggesting as a whole, to clean your sewer grates in front of your house to exfoliate the water, um, so we don't run into any problems. They are saying check your basements regularly tomorrow night. That's what the weather report is, but we don't know. But, uh, help our DPW out by making sure, the leaves are starting to fall, so they're going to collect in the, in the gutters and on the grate, so make sure you clear them out if you can.
Great. Thanks, Councilman Pollocka.
I have nothing this evening. No.
Councilwoman Piana?
Um, just two things. I wanted to, um, express my appreciation to city staff that threw an awesome Hilton Fall Festival. I helped volunteer and sell tickets, and, um, we had some really happy kids to ride the ponies and the bouncy bouncy house, um, and parents who expressed that the event is just right, just enough activities to entertain their kids, and so, um, it was really well done, so thank you. Um, to our, uh, rec director, Jill, is she in the room?
Yes, she is. Just get out tonight.
Okay, so, and then I just wanted to remind people that the Dales Neighborhood Group is having Halloweens in the Dales from five thirty to eight thirty on Halloween night. We're going to have a tent in front of, uh, Taft or the deals, the digital learning center, um, off of Fielding, and we're going to be offering donuts, uh, cider, and candy for our kids in the neighborhood, and it's a way for neighbors to come meet their neighbors, hang out, and, uh, have a good time, uh, on Halloween night.
Thank you, and I, um, I only have two things. Uh, the first is, it is election season. We talked about elections, uh, quite a bit today, and there is a meet and greet. If you'd like to meet one of the Supreme Court candidates, Richard Bernstein will be at M. Brew this Sunday at three PM. So if you, it's a good opportunity. It's a free event, open to anyone to come by, meet the candidate, um, and, uh, and get to spend some individual time with him. And then secondly, this is just for council's information. I've asked, um, the city manager and staff to take a look at, uh, the, uh, an ordinance that's been adopted in a couple Michigan cities and several more across the country, um, relating to equal benefits and the city's ability to contract with a, uh, company who does not offer, uh, domestic partner benefits to their employees. Several cities have picked this up, um, and I just want to put it on your radar that I've asked staff to spend some time researching that and what that would look like in our, in our scenario, so that's just a heads up. And with that, we are adjourned.
Good job, Bill.